Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but Joanna is like, they're on vacation, so we get it.
That's why I said to her.
He's not getting your unopposed.
You and your family, I'm sure.
Because it might have gone out the mail.
Yeah, that works.
Some of your family.
Somebody drove me there.
Steve, will you let me know if they mailed it to him or?
Yeah, I will. I'll let you know.
Okay.
I'm ready. Do it.
There's a. Welcome to the June 16, 2022 Northampton County Council meeting. Mr. Cusick will lead us in the place. Ms. Semble, will you call the roll?
Mr. Brown. Mr. Cusick.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski.
Here.
Okay, the one missing is Mr. Brown and Mr. Giovanni. Mr. Lot and Mr. Myers are on the phone.
Is there a way to turn them up? Because I can hear them a little.
They have to speak into where they are.
All right.
Okay.
I can hear you. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 2, please?
Motion.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Aye.
See, that's going to be a comedy routine all night with the two of them, isn't it? Thank you. It's.
No, it's not.
There was no one who signed in from the courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to courtesy of the floor? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. McClure is not here, so. So why don't I do old business? And then, you know, if we can shoot them in somewhere, we can. Old business would be the public hearing on an ordinance entitled.
Courtesy of the floor.
An ordinance amending the 2022 Northampton County budget, Department of Administration, Administration, Department of Community and Economic Development, Emergency Rental Assistance, Community Development Grant, EPA Revolving Loan, Department of Administration, EMS and E911, Department of Fiscal Affairs, Balancing of the Budget, Sheriff, Court Administration, Magisterial Judges, Problem-Solving Courts, Department of Public Works, Insect Pest Management, 2021 GISA, Department of Human Services, Homeless Assistant Development Fund, Grants Children, Youth, and Families, Area Agency on Aging, Health Choices, Mental Health, Developmental Programs, Early Intervention, Drug and Alcohol, GISA Debt Service Payment, and ARP Approved Projects. Myself and Mr. Myers introduced this ordinance at June 2, 2022 meeting. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Is there any discussion from council? Mr. Cusick.
Just a quick point. I did vote against this year's budget, and one of the reasons was because I felt that the basis of the Gracestale budget, the census, was inaccurate. And I continue to believe that. The budget was based on a census number of 575, and at our last meeting, I saw it was 400, somewhere in that range. So there are some items in this amendment that do address Gracestale, but ultimately, the census issue has not yet been addressed. That was my hope, that it would be addressed through a budget amendment. Now, there are some good things in here that we voted for for Gracestale, and I support those. But one thing I did want to point out is we had that presentation regarding census issues, and I'm in disagreement with this administration that we should continue to press for patients to a room. I think the census right now is at a point where we should look to transition, and I think that that would be a good point of emphasis. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski.
Yes.
Mr. Brown. Oh, sorry. Mr. Cusick.
Yes.
Stop to by vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other old business to discuss? Before Mr. McClure sits down, maybe we can get an executive report. Unless you prefer not to.
Pardon my tardiness.
We heard.
Okay. Is Bob here? Oh, there he is. Hi, Mary. Do they know you're here? Well, Mary, come here. So. Did you tell them? Oh, they know?
Not everybody. The ones I knew know.
We all have something in common. Mary was a member of the greatest deliberative body in the Lehigh Valley. Thank you.
Thanks, Lamont.
My friend, Bob Beglio Mene. Did I get that right, Bob?
Yes, sir.
See, we're friends. Who's a farm D and an MBA, is the Senior Vice President of Operations, Lehigh Valley Health Network, and President of Lehigh Valley Hospital Mullenberg. He's here with us tonight, and I'd like to give a moment or two of my time to him because he has some news for us, I believe. Bob?
Really?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Lamont. And thank you for having me today. I'm very excited to be here to present to you a little bit about LVHN and our mobile health and what we do in terms of mobile health. First, as Lamont said, Bob Beglio Mene, I'm the President of Lehigh Valley Hospital Mullenberg. I am the Senior Vice President for LVHN, and I have responsibility for all of Northampton County and everything we do at LVHN in Northampton County. So again, excited to be here, and I actually am a resident of Northampton County. I live in Lehigh Township. So our mission at LVHN is to heal, comfort, and care for the community that we serve, as you're well aware. And to that end, back in July of last year, almost a year ago, we opened our Hectown Oaks location in Lower Nazareth Township, and it has been arousing success for us and the members of the community of Northampton County as well. In addition to that, we do have numerous health centers in the region, express care, primary care, and specialty practices in the region. And we do have a significant amount of experience with mobile health. And I was just going to touch on a couple of them for you, so you're aware of our experience with mobile health. And the first one is our Miles of Smiles Mobile Dental Clinic, which we've had in place since 2009, primarily focused on the Allentown School District. However, we are expanding our program, our Miles of Smiles Dental Program, and we'll hopefully be able to move that into the Northampton County region as well. We've treated approximately 11,000 individuals with the Miles of Smiles, and we've provided 3.2 million in charitable care over that time as well. Another area that we have mobile, that we've provided mobile healthcare over the years is our stroke center, our stroke, our mobile stroke unit. There are only about 20 of these in the entire country. And we've partnered with Centonia Ambulance, providing life-saving care for patients who have stroke in their home, in their driveway, where we can actually provide a CAT scan of a patient in the driveway. If, and depending on the result of that CAT scan, we can provide life-saving clot-busting drug in the driveway and then transport that patient to a hospital as necessary. So really urgent type of care that we provide in a mobile manner. Mobile mammography, you might have heard of. We have used that in certainly in Northampton County and around the region, providing 3D mammogram. We've treated over 7,000 patients in 103 different locations, including 813 patients in 20 locations in Northampton County. And of those patients, about 208 are uninsured. So we do provide that care for uninsured patients as well. And finally, the mobile clinic, our COVID mobile clinics, where we provided throughout the pandemic a number of vaccination mobile sites around the region, 256 to be exact, and provided over 17,000 immunizations with our mobile clinic. So. And we've also had drive-through clinics as well for COVID vaccines here in Northampton County as well. And finally, I just wanted to mention our Leonard Parker Pool Institute for Health. So how do we understand what the needs may be of this community? And they are certainly a huge help for us in providing us the data and the resources, qualitative and quantitative data, to understand what the community needs are. So in conjunction with the county and our Leonard Pool Trust Institute for Health, we together can determine together what the best needs are for the community in terms of mobile healthcare, which we will do. So again, very excited to be here. Thank you very much for your consideration and happy to answer any questions.
Do we want to ask him questions now, or do we want to get to that portion of the council's purview?
He's standing up now.
Go ahead.
I did want to point out two errors on the document that you have, just so you're aware. It states two hospitals. We only have one at Hectown Oaks. And for express cares, we actually have three in the region. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on that. There was a typo on there. So my apologies.
I'll start with a question. And then a full disclosure, I can't vote on this this evening because I work for one of the two entities, so I can't vote for either. But last night, I asked a gentleman about when residents come. And obviously, if they're uninsured, it's sort of easy. We don't bill you, and you get services. But if someone is insured and they come to your mobile unit, do you charge their insurance?
We would. We would at least make an attempt to bill their insurance. And if we were unable to do that for some reason, or we couldn't provide that through insurance, we would report it as uncompensated care or provide uncompensated care, for sure.
And I guess why I ask this, and it comes up all the time in healthcare, because I work in, is that there's this, there's people with insurance and copays and deductibles that they can afford, and then there's folks that are uninsured, and so they get the benefits. And then there's this large pool of people in the middle who some of their healthcare out-of-pocket costs are really prohibitive. And so I guess my question on both of these vehicles and how you'll address this is if someone tries to use these services, and then they start to encumber a debt because of their deductible or unforeseen costs, how both of you would choose to handle it. And I don't necessarily expect you to answer that tonight, but I would just hope that if this goes through, that both of you will at least look to waive or create some kind of policy around those costs, because it just happened for me today. Somebody came in and said, I can't do this because I can't afford this. And, you know, there's people that are not making $15 an hour, and they don't have insurance or are underinsured that can't afford these kinds of things. So.
Absolutely.
I mean, I appreciate the question.
Appreciate the comment and the question. And what I would say is, we deal with things like this every day. We do have a group of folks that, a department that works on this for those that are underinsured or can't afford their care. And we work very closely with them on a daily basis.
I would just hope that both of you would consider some kind of written documents or policies that could be given to these folks once they get on the, you know, when they're entering these vehicles so that they understand, because I think people get devastated when the cost comes later, and they go, what, it wasn't free? It wasn't covered? So.
Understood.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir?
I'd like to follow up on, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a minute. Mr. Heckman has the floor, and then I'll get to you. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on Ms. Vargo Hefner. I think she made an excellent point. Philosophically, I'm not opposed to approving the vans. I think it's a worthwhile cause. My concern, though, does lie in where she is speaking in the sense that I think most of us fall into a category where, whether, even if you're on Medicare for that matter, there's always, generally speaking, a copay that you're responsible for. And I like what your answer. My experience with both healthcare systems is the, whatever they can't get from insurance, they're going to come after you for. And they may not be as pleasant as you're suggesting when you try to talk to them and say, well, there's an issue here. They're pretty forceful on wanting that you to pick up that tab, because they want you to be, this is what we charge. They didn't cover it. You're going to cover it. So I guess my point is, to me, this stimulus money, whether we think it was a great idea, as much of it should have been put out there as possible, I want to get it to the people, the taxpayers themselves, who actually are paying for all of this, with the least amount of middle men involved. You're providing the services, and obviously, you would use the van and go out and provide these services. So I guess what I'm saying is, I would hope that with these vans, both health networks, I'm not picking any use, both health networks, well, Star, I guess, is the one, or is the other one, but that you would maybe look at this as a unique situation, whereas these people, this has already been paid for very strongly by the taxpayers, and we're just rerouting their money back out into the community. I hate to see them get dinged a second time because their insurance only covered 80%. And somebody says, well, the bill, we want X amount more. So that's just my follow-up on her comments and questions. And I would encourage you, as I would encourage the other folks, to consider that going forward for something that's made for the public.
Sure.
Paid for by the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Go ahead.
I just want to follow up on what both of you had to say. I agree wholeheartedly. My question is, where are these vans going to be located out of?
Where will they be located out of? Is that the question, sir?
Yeah, I have to correct.
My understanding is anywhere throughout Northampton County. There was, I saw some commentary around the Slate Belt area in western Northampton County as to key areas, which, you know, certainly could be the case. Again, I would suggest that we work closely with the county to understand where the best, where the greatest needs are, and determine where it would be, where, I guess, both would be located in the county.
Yeah, we're a large county. That's why I was trying to ask that question as to where you would be located out of. So you say you have the northern end, and then you have what you have down here. Maybe there's some way we can work and figure out where you're essentially located, and we can get them from that point.
Sure. Absolutely. Up for discussion.
But my understanding is that you will drive, the whole point is that they're mobile.
Right.
So that if Chestnut School wanted to do a health clinic, you would drive to Chestnut School, and you would be there.
Absolutely. Yes. Maybe I misunderstood the question. Yes, these would be mobile. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we would locate that mobile. Again, mobile, we would take it to the locations that are most necessary for an event, anything that was necessary in the county.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to know that, because you were talking about dental and health and the whole nine yards. I know, my mother ran the project dental clinic for decades in Easton, so I was just trying to figure out how you guys were going to get to certain locations. But if you're centrally located, that might be the answer.
Okay.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Ms. Sarinski?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for showing up tonight. I'm glad that you did, because now we get a chance to vote on this. And I think it's a great endeavor, because not only is it helping the underinsured and uninsured, but it's also helping the people who don't have access to hospitals, who are in regions where they might be a little bit more isolated. So I think that's really important. One of my questions yesterday was, and I know that there's something on our agenda tonight about particulates and emissions and things like that, and I know that when we're talking about these vehicles, sometimes they're idling. Is this one of those things where you can potentially get an electric vehicle? Is that a possibility?
You know, I don't have the expertise to answer that question, Ms. Sarinski, so I apologize. But I would imagine that could be something we could look at. But I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. I would appreciate if you did.
Sure.
Because I think, you know, we're talking about air quality in the Lehigh Valley and emissions and things like that. And so we want to find ways where we can mitigate that and also contribute to the health while we're contributing to people's health.
It makes a lot of sense. So we will absolutely take that into consideration and
Excellent.
Get back to you.
Thank you so much.
Any other, Mr. Gofredo?
How are you? Just looking through your brochure, you have a number of vehicles. I'm assuming all of those are owned by Lehigh Valley Health Network, correct?
The mobile COVID vaccine was a lease. We had a partnership with a local car dealership, and so those were leased. But the others are, I believe all the others are owned, yes.
Okay, so I'm assuming you've never had a county purchase a vehicle for you to use at your discretion. Can you justify in your own words why you think that this would be a good use of taxpayer money to buy a vehicle for the health network? I understand it's being used for underserved, you know, under lower economic areas, but so is that Miles for Smiles van, or that bus that you guys have. I'm just trying to justify why we should be using taxpayer money to buy these vehicles.
Well, that's a very good question. I think my answer would be that there is a significant need, certainly in our communities. There's significant gaps in healthcare and health disparities. And these vans, we're going to go a long way to close those gaps in areas that we're, quite frankly, in some cases, unable to provide that care. So I think these, the two vans by both health networks are going to go a long way and be able to close the gap in healthcare.
No doubt, no doubt. But at the same time, if we're buying it in your name, I almost feel like, you know, obviously, this is a charitable contribution on your part.
It is.
It's a write-off. Wouldn't the purchase of the vehicle be the same? Why, you know, this is money that could be used for a myriad of things in a very tough time for a county. I just want to be able to justify why, you know, Lehigh Valley Health Network and St. Luke's do a lot of business, a lot of money going through. This $1.2 million could be used for a number of things that could help the taxpayers. And I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that, you know, we're justifying it for the taxpayer.
Well, I think, you know, everything that we do, both health networks, is for the betterment of the community. We can't afford to do everything. And this is going to go a long way to help both of us to provide the care that's necessary in the community. And what better way to partner with the county so we can do something together for the betterment of the community that you serve? So, you know, I think it is, we are certainly thankful for this offer and the opportunity to do this. We will partner as best we can to take care of the community as we move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cusick?
Yeah, two quick ones. Certainly, the mobile mammography is a great idea. Do you have anything comparable for men? I'm, you know, men are reluctant consumers of services like this. Is there something?
So I don't have data on how many men we have provided mammography to.
Not mammography, no. I mean, in terms of like a PSA test or some sort of.
Currently, no, we don't. But certainly, if we think about what the opportunities are with this.
That's where I was.
With this model, without question, there are a number of different health screenings that we can provide in this mobile, in a mobile setting, for sure.
Yeah, that's where I was headed, because men are much more reluctant consumers.
They are.
Of services like this. And the other one was with the mobile vaccination unit. Will that go away when the lease ends, or do you intend to broaden it to things like flu shots or monkeypox or whatever?
Potentially. We could. We could. Two, some of the leases are ending, but we do have, we still have some that are going to continue on. It's our, as is, I believe, St. Luke's, to continue to provide COVID vaccine as necessary in the community as the pandemic moves ahead. So we will identify ways to continue to do that, whether that's mobile, whether that's drive-through. We do have a number of drive-through flu, through flu vaccines. We had one at Hectown Oaks this year. And we'll continue to provide those into the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
I'm just reacting, because there's a lot of jokes about if men had to go through mammograms, but I won't go there. I went there.
But some men do require them.
They do. They do. They do. Sure.
So it's a serious question.
Madam President?
I'm sorry?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Just to follow up, I really want to follow up on the response that John made about the mobile access for men, especially with the PSAs, because in the lower-income folks that we have throughout our community, they may not go get that test. And it is something that's going to wrap it. If you live long enough, you will get prostate cancer if you live long enough as a male. Let me just, you know, put that out there, and we can joke about it. But as a prostate survivor, cancer survivor, I think it's awfully important that we get that access out to the people.
Yep. And, you know, we could, we will likely, you know, provide blood draws for PSAs and things like that as well. So there's plenty of opportunity.
Thank you. Any last questions or follow-up?
Yeah, just to follow up, I know in regards to what Ms. Sarinski asked you about the environment and environmentally friendly, Air Products has always had, has had a robust program of hydrogen-powered vehicles and partnering on such things. Of course, they'll get their promotional material on the side, but it's a small price. I mean, I would, based on where you're at, and with Air Products, I mean, your emission is oxygen. So, I mean, it's a possibility of a partnership with, I don't want to over, I'm not overcomplicating, I'm just throwing it out there.
I believe we have partnered with them in the past, or actually, on other vehicles. So, you know, again, we will explore those options, for sure.
No, I just wanted, I remember seeing their vehicles around, and I think they did some for Lanta. I don't know if they still do or not.
They did. I believe so.
You know, it's just a thought. That's all I have, Madam President.
Any last questions coming? Call for the vote. Oh, there's no vote. Thanks for coming. I'm so distracted.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
We're still at the.
I thought we were.
Okay, I'm going to move quickly, because apparently, apparently, she's in a hurry, so I'm going to move quickly. No, all kidding aside, I want to thank, while Bob and Mary are here, although they weren't, I don't believe, directly involved, when we needed a home for our testing, our COVID-19 testing, and, you know, it might not seem like a thing now, but when they agreed to work with us at Coordinated Health, LVHN, it was a big deal, remains a big deal. We're about to do our 10,000th test with them at the drive-through. Remember, it's a drive-through, so very convenient. And I think we have 5,000 interactions for vaccinations at the drive-through site. So thank you very much. Let the folks know we're involved, that we appreciate it very much. And can we let them go? Or do you want to make them sit here?
I'm not going to make them sit.
Okay.
You know, the other entity isn't here. I think it was asked and received, and you'll have to field all the rest of the questions.
Okay, I'm pretty well-versed in it. All right. So, good news. Let's do some good news. Ms. Wondolowski, who is she here, received this letter on June 2, 2022. "My name is William Kim Arthur. I live in Northampton County, Moore Township, PA. I was a police officer in Hackettstown, New Jersey, for 30 years. I then worked as a police officer in Upper Nazareth for another 10 years. I was assigned to schools as a school resource officer in the Nazareth School District. Unfortunately, when I retired in 2015, I developed cancer and Parkinson's disease. These complications greatly limited my retirement. Sometime later, I was called by some friends that were in the Marine Corps with me. We were all stationed at Camp Lejeune, North Carolina. It seems they also had medical issues. They directed me to contact my Veterans Delegate at the Northampton County Office about the water contamination at Camp Lejeune. At the VA office, I met Alex Corillo, the VA representative. I cannot tell you how much Alex and his secretary Stephanie helped me with receiving help from the VA. There are many hurdles a veteran has to go through to obtain medical benefits, but Alex was right there to help me. I called many times, and he returned my calls promptly. I'm a senior citizen, age 72, and not up to date with paperwork and computers, but Alex was right there again to help me. The process was a long one, with many forms to fill out, and Alex guided me through them. I could not have accomplished the paperwork without his help. Alex and Stephanie are devoted employees of the Northampton County Government. In August 2021, I was awarded 100% disability claim by the VA. I am proud and thankful to the Northampton County for the exceptional service Alex and Stephanie performed for me. William Kim Arthur." Thought you'd like to know that our VA office is doing that. We also received on June 2 from Pima, the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Office, that we have utilized all the funding that we received through Pima appropriately throughout the year. So that's good news. Your government at work. There, and I really wanted Bob and Mary to leave before I gave you guys this, but now they can stay for it. So, you know, we have two wonderful hospital systems, St. Luke's University Healthcare Network and Lehigh Valley Health Network. But one of the things that we have identified recently is a dearth of PCPs, or primary care physicians. And a friend of mine, who is a primary care physician, was sort of describing for me recently what it's like to be a primary care physician now, and how very difficult it is. So one of the things we have explored for our employees, because upon taking office in early 2018, in early 2018, we restored the healthcare benefits and improved the healthcare benefits that had been so deleteriously affected for our employees. Because, you know, one of the things after our primary directive, which is to do what's in the best interest of the taxpayers of Northampton County, is how do we make the experience of working at Northampton County better for our employees? So we're exploring a, creating a exclusive for Northampton County employees and their insured dependents' health center, which would be confidential and run by a third party. And to that end, we did a survey of our employees. Anything do you want? To see if they would be interested. And we got that, we got those results back and we have a little less than 2,000 full and part-time employees and, and we had 481 people respond. And although this isn't a scientific survey, when we asked, would you use an onsite or near-site health center that is run by a third party and offered exclusively to county employees and their insured dependents, 78.2% of our employees answered in the affirmative. So clearly there's, of this subset, there's an interest in, and you can see from the rest of the questions in the survey that there is general interest. So you may be hearing more about that from us in the near future as we constantly strive to make the work experience at Northampton County a better one. Little Greystale News, the PPD, on 6/6, it was 286. On 6/7, 295. On 6/8, 3.12. On 6/9, 2.74. On 6/10, 2.68. On 6/11, 2.91. And on 6/12, 2.71. On 6/13, 2.87. And on 6/14, 2.81. In April of this year, FMLA was 40%. In May, it was 21%. And for June, it's on track to be 20%. So cut in half. So clearly, some of the things that we're doing, counsel, at least in the near term, are having some salubrious benefit at Greystale. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. McClure?
Oh, I have a question. And maybe, I, I don't know if you'll be able to answer this or it'll be a future answer. But I did see, and I've already spoken to Ms. Zirinsky, that there was an agreement made with both Lehigh and Northampton Counties regarding a, a specific lawsuit that was, that was filed. One of the things that we said we would do, and this is informational, I'm not judging anything, was there were some remedies that were agreed to. And, and I guess my question, rather than get specific, is other than the, other than the website and like color of envelopes, are we able to do that at the county level or must that be approved by the state?
So, so the three things.
And purely information.
The three things we agreed to were to put information on the website to encourage the voter to provide contact information. The thought being, you know, parties or candidates could follow up with the voters. We agreed to do what we did in 2020. 2020, on Election Day, we provided to the parties the list of folks who, for one reason or another, did not cast a valid ballot and they could then go chase them. So that was something we were already doing. We stopped doing it because nobody was interested in it after 2020, but we'll start doing it again. And finally, we agreed to investigate the possibility of having a different colored envelope for the security envelope.
And, and so you're investigating whether we can do that independently to the state?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and believe me, I, and I know Ms. Zirinsky knows this, I, I think that what the state gave the counties to administer was a confusing at best law when it came to the elections. And you understand, confusing at best is very kind, right? But it was very confusing. And, and I hope that at the state they would clear that up.
So we were, you know, one of the, one of the things as a tangential matter, one of the things, one of the labors we were operating under in 2020, we got a memo from the district attorney indicating that even looking at a envelope and noticing that it didn't have a secrecy ballot within it, because you could tell the difference between one that had one and one that didn't, after you were handling 50 a day, he said that that was precanvassing and we couldn't do that, that violated the law. So, you know, there you go.
So there's that.
Thanks.
Can I just make one comment on that since we opened it up?
Go ahead.
I would like to thank the county for making the effort to settle and for listening to the claims of the voters and allowing us to watch the recount. It's really important. And I sympathize with our Board of Elections and, and everybody who works down there. It is heartbreaking to see the votes not be counted. And we did not receive enough direction from the state after they amended Act 77. There is nothing that is unifying in any county to determine how it is that we can handle those ballots. And so by, on a county-by-county basis, that's how this is being determined for the most part. And it's, it's kind of sad that one county can do things and another county can't because of certain things.
Well, just as a, just as a general matter, we're a Commonwealth and we do have 67 different election, I mean, the state, I think, for us being a Commonwealth and for Pennsylvania's history, I think the state has actually done a fairly good job at attempting to uniform, make our elections more uniform. But I hear what you're saying and from, this is just Lamont's opinion, not the county's position, I, I think you can waive your right to privacy and if you, if you don't put your ballot in, in the secrecy envelope, your ballot ought to count. That's my view. Because I can come out of the, I can come out of the voting booth and tell everybody who I voted for, if I choose to. I mean, it's just, that's just my view.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. McClure? Thank you. Is there any old business to discuss? Moving into new business, we had the consideration of personnel requests Department of Human Services Resolution. Mr. Hackman, will you please introduce this?
Certainly. It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that two full-time positions of program specialists, one pay grade HS39-1A, salary $52,166, shall be created in the Department of Human Services Developmental Programs Division effective the 17th day of June 2022. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one part-time position of caseworker, county caseworker two, pay grade PS35-17Q, salary $19,990, shall be upgraded to one full-time position of county caseworker two, pay grade PS35-17Q, salary $64,485, in the Department of Human Services Developmental Programs Division effective the 17th day of June 2022. So moved. And just to add that we discussed this at the Personnel Committee meeting.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions regarding this or this resolution? Call for the vote.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of administration of American Rescue Plan Funds Resolution, TK Elevator Corporation. Mr. Gofredo, will you introduce the resolution?
Whereas the county executive and county council have identified the need to engage in capital improvements to help maintain safety and security for the public entering county facilities. And whereas, Northampton County Council adopted Resolution 66-2022, identified the need for improvements to the government-centered elevators that are eligible to be funded by the American Rescue Plan funding. And whereas, the Northampton County Executive has requested on May 27, 2022, to engage in a contract with TK Elevator Corporation to modernize elevators two and three at the government center for a total cost of $407,000 for both elevators. Now therefore be resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with TK Elevator Corporation through the use of American Rescue Plan funds.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions regarding this? Call for the vote.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of administration of American Rescue Plan Funds for Public Health and Safety, P25 Expansion Plan Resolution. Mr. Cusick, will you introduce this?
Sure. Whereas the county executive and county council have identified the need to engage community stability to lower the impact of COVID-19 on the citizens of the county. And whereas, the Northampton County Executive identified the need for certain projects that are eligible to be funded by the American Rescue Plan funding. And whereas, the Northampton County Executive has identified the needs that have not been budgeted previously to ensure public health, safety and welfare. And whereas, the citizens of Northampton County will benefit from these programs helping citizens of all ages survive and thrive in Northampton County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council of Northampton County authorizes the county executive to expend the amount of $5 million to expand the P25 emergency radio system in Northampton County.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter or questions?
Ms. President, I have a question.
Yes.
Is Mr. Derringer there? Because I wasn't at the meeting yesterday.
Yes, he's here.
May I ask him a question?
Yes.
Mr. Derringer, is this the Cody system that was at Bethlehem?
No, this is the Motorola digital dispatch system that they had, their radio system that provides for private talk groups and significantly more bandwidth for all of the emergency agencies.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Gofredo?
Would this make the northern part of the county that's not utilizing this system, would their systems become less useful, would they need to upgrade their system in due time? And what is the cost that would be incurred by smaller municipalities? Is there any cost incurred by them or is this all going to be county-funded when eventually they upgrade their systems?
There are a lot of different parts to that. So the first part of that is it will not affect the northern tier, it will not make them any less or more effective in their areas, their systems will continue working as they have. As we mentioned last night, it would be another $20 million to get there. But one of the big phases or one of the big advantages of doing this here is it puts us in a much better position to draw down on grants or partnerships so that we can look forward in the future to expanding those locations. A number of the northern tier and throughout the county municipalities, over time, are replacing their radios. And over the last two years or so, we have been advising everyone that they should be looking towards, when they do replace their radios, to a P25 compatible radio so that when we do make the, when we do get to a position where we can expand everywhere, they would be in position to use them without further expenses.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of administration of American Rescue Plan Funds for Public Health and Safety, purchase of two mobile health vehicles, resolution. Am I allowed to introduce the resolution?
You can introduce it.
Okay, thank you.
Are you not allowed?
I'm not voting. Whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the county council of Northampton County thereby authorizes the county executive to expend the amount of $1.2 million to purchase and outfit two mobile health vehicles for use by Northampton County residents. Any more discussion on the matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Abstain.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of administration of American Rescue Plan Funds for Public Health and Safety, lead paint and water line mitigation resolution. Mr. Hackman, will you introduce this resolution?
Oh, okay. Now therefore be it resolved that the county council of Northampton County hereby authorizes the county executive to expand the amount of $1 million for lead paint and water line mitigation in Northampton County. So moved.
Any discussion on this matter?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Last night I was cut off and I'm going to get this question. Are we allowing landlords with multiple properties to have access to these funding?
I, the answer was no, that these are for homeowner, Mr. Brooks, if you want to, they're for homeowners and landlords are not eligible for this program, correct?
Yes.
The answer to Mr. Myers' question is no.
Oh, well, thank you.
There you go.
I thought I said that long, but.
You did.
No.
The only reason I asked that question because there are many folks that are renting or in some of these areas where that does exist. But since they're not eligible, there's nothing we can do about it.
Right. This program is specifically for homeowners.
That's it.
Any other comments, question, discussion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Hackman?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of administration of American Rescue Plan Funds for Public Health and Safety, air sampling stations, resolution. Mr. Gofredo, will you introduce?
Whereas the county executive and county council have identified the need to engage community stability to lower the impact of COVID-19 on the citizens of the county. And whereas, the Northampton County Executive identified the need for certain projects that are eligible to be funded by American Rescue Plan funding. And whereas, the Northampton County Executive has identified the needs that have not been budgeted previously to ensure public health, safety and welfare. And whereas, the citizens of Northampton County will benefit from the programs helping citizens of all ages survive and thrive in Northampton County. Now therefore be it resolved that the county council of Northampton, Northampton County hereby authorizes the county executive to expend the amount of $50,000 for the placement of air sampling stations around Northampton County.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions regarding this matter? Mr. Cusick?
Yeah, I, I had one and this came up to a certain extent yesterday. I, I think this is a good idea. I'd like to have verified what I think a lot of us sense is that all the warehousing and diesel trucks are impacting our air quality. We did receive the proposal from Mr. Zabrowski, Ms. Holland and Ms. Witchen. And one of the questions that I had was, some of the line items are self-explanatory, the monitors, the installation, the design. But under consulting, one of the line items is general project management. The previous line item, the data management and analysis, that's Lehigh University. The question that came up is who will be the general project manager for that line item of $23,950?
I think she, there was a lot of information last night, but I think Ms. Witchen acknowledged that she has formed a company to do that work, to manage the project. that she has formed a company to do that work, to manage the project. So it would be Ms. Witchen.
Is it her company called iSpring?
I don't know. No, it's a, she can't use that one, I believe. I think she's had to create another one.
I think that I would like to have had that indicated on this. Do we have, is it a nonprofit? Do we have the paperwork that indicates?
She's definitely operating as a nonprofit because it would interfere with her other pursuits if it were not, I believe was the understanding.
Okay. Does DCED have that information from her?
No, they don't.
That's, that was my question.
Mr. Gofredo.
I kind of share some of the same concerns. If it was, I would like, you know, I would like a little bit more time to be able to maybe gather more information about how she comes to the figure of $24,000 virtually, half of the, half of the entire budget, especially when it seems like the county will be installing and maintaining. Lehigh is going to be announced, you know, analyzing the data and collecting it. So basically, the line item says coordination and final report for $24,000. So I feel like that needs a little bit more clarification, a little bit more detail.
Yeah, and I think, I think during their presentation to us, and certainly if you would have asked, she could have explained to you, there's quite a lot of work in getting all of those moving parts together, and that's what she's focused on, on making sure that that takes care, that's all taken care of.
Does seem a little out of, usually, and I know this is under $100,000, but she's presenting a plan where she is basically the sole proprietor of the plan.
We more or less asked her to be the sole proprietor of the plan so that it would not hit upon county employees or county efforts. We took on what we could to keep this an inexpensive pilot program. So...
And any breakdown of her possible hours or how she intends to justify the $24,000 line item for her management fees? Because that's, at the end of the day, we're just trusting that that's going to be spent, you know, how many hours is that? How much time is she dedicating to this project? And how can, how can we know that going off of this?
Well, all in all, from where we started, and, you know, certainly you're looking at the second level of the proposal, this is a much more expensive project if we didn't all kick into the different things that we needed to do. So I think from our conversations, and certainly as we whittled down to get this to fit into a pilot project and a cost of $50,000, that's how we arrived at lesser involvement, and certainly a lot of things that she still needed to do for this, to keep all the pieces moving between Carnegie Mellon and Lehigh University. She's going to be managing all of that, not the least which, data gathering and purchasing and so on for us.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I think the concern, and I left last night not realizing, I had questions when I left, was I was unaware of approximately two-thirds of it going to operations. And you know, heard me say earlier, with a lot of this American Rescue money, I'd like to see it get back into the pockets of the taxpayers as soon as possible. I mean, there's so much of it without as few middlemen as possible. I guess I was a little concerned. I knew it would cost some money. But her presentation was more almost, I mean, I told the president, I didn't know if I've, last time I heard the word "obviously" so many times, and my red flags go up when somebody's sort of preaching as opposed to explaining why you must do this, obviously, obviously. I wish you would have spent some more time on, all right, you're an expert, that's great, you know, but what, we didn't get the real breakdown that they're concerned about with her salary and that the questions are coming up.
Mr. Heckman has the floor.
I mean, we are the ones who have to vote on it. So it's fair, it's fair to bring it up. I mean, she had her turn, and she was telling us, and I agree, we should test our air, but it was more of a per-functionary overview of things we already knew, which air is bad, we're going to test the air. So I think what's being asked are fundamental questions of procedure. Okay, I know you were going to be involved. I was unaware of how much you were going to pay yourself to be involved. And was she the only one that could do this? You approached her. Were there others that could be approached? So I guess it's just, and I know it's not, we're not talking about a lot of money here, but it's still taxpayers' money. So I could see where some of the concern came from. And I just thought that it would have been nice for her to have, when this was presented to us, to have the breakdown right away, like she could have addressed some of these things, as opposed to why it's a good idea. We all get why it's a good idea. So that was my concern. But, you know, you got to pay somebody, so I guess, why not pay yourself?
Well, Mr. Heckman, as you can imagine, having known Mr. Zabrowski as long as you have, this is something that has gone completely unaddressed and unchallenged. Mr. Zabrowski, during his term as the chairman or president of the Planning Commission, had used that opportunity to constantly point out how poor our air is in the various reports that were out there that just really didn't give us the information. The proposal actually came from them. They had, but their proposal also included them, us doing a lot more of the...
It was them?
Them.
Them.
You have it on, in the proposal there, you have the four names, that would be Mr. Zabrowski, Breina Holland, Andrea Witchen, and Charles Elliott. They saw the need, they came to us because they knew that this was something that we are generally responsible for, just as we take care of elements with the Planning Commission and so on. And this is a key element that the Planning Commission is missing. It is a key element that the state is missing to recognize the air quality here, because every time, as she mentioned last night, repeatedly, and she did say obviously, but obviously, the data is needed to make the argument. You can say that we have bad air, and we all know. I mean, people are coughing right now. People are having difficult time breathing, you know, depending on what time of the year it is. But it's obvious that there's a problem. They're looking to provide the data so that we can drive new policy and certainly drive better zoning in our county and provide extra tools to the Planning Commission so that when we're telling municipalities or when we're explaining issues to municipalities, we've got something to show them, this is actually what's happening.
Sure, you have the floor.
I appreciate what you're saying. And we, I think we all understand it, and I think we all would agree with everything you're saying. It's a speech, I think, where, again, I will restate what I said earlier. The problem was the mechanics of it. I wish we could have gotten, drilled deep. We would, there wouldn't be the question marks today, I think, that people brought up, if we had gotten a little, we could take a few minutes to say we know the air stinks. We know the air in our area has terrible, terrible problems. That being said, more time could have then been spent on, this is why I should be the one to do it. My group is informed, yet we haven't, we don't, do we have our 401(c)(3)? I don't know what they're, how they're setting themselves up. I don't know how they're dividing up the funds. So, you know, from my perspective, sure, it's great. I mean, we could do this with water and give it to the state. There's nothing wrong with what they want to do. My concern is after looking deeper under the surface of the good deed is, oh, okay, you know, we didn't get a lot of detail when it was presented, that's all. Other than, we're doing a great thing, and most of the money's going to go to us, and we're going to make something happen and give you a report at the end. I don't know how it's being apportioned between the four. I don't know if the company's been set up yet, or the nonprofit's been set up yet, but we're going to give you the money. And I don't know. It's just in my experience, this happens now and then. I just think it was a bit, and it is a bit awkward. So.
Ms. Serinski?
Yes. I just want to comment. I don't, I don't believe this project is a means by which they're trying to extract funds for salaries in this program management. I think that they've already dedicated a year of coordination in trying to pull this together to organize this between county and state entities, different organizations, their own group, Lehigh, Carnegie Mellon, right? And so I think when they're asking for compensation to continue this, and when we look at consultants, I mean, $23,000 is not an exorbitant amount of money. And when you look at the expected project outcomes, that tells you exactly what they're going to do. They're going to continue coordinating with state and local agencies, with the colleges. They're going to identify the specific geographic regions that have the most impact. They're going to be able to understand and analyze the data so that they could effectively change things in those areas to improve not only the air quality, but possibly the health and safety of the individuals living in those areas. What they're asking for is not actually a lot for what they're going to be able to do. And I think that they're coming to the counties, and if I'm correct, they've already gone to Lehigh County, and they've already been accepted by Lehigh County. And I'm not saying that just because Lehigh County did it, we should do it. I'm saying that there is a great need for this. These four individuals in our community took the initiative to organize this, to orchestrate it, and now they're asking for not only our support, but some funds to help them, get them over the finish line so that they can help us. I personally am going to support this, and I hope that you will as well, and not diminish the efforts that they've already put forward and that they're projecting to be able to accomplish with this small amount of money, $50,000.
Just a minute, just a minute. Does anybody on the phone have a question or comment?
No.
I'd like to make a comment first.
The one that recognizes?
I... I don't have any problem with the value or the intent, but we got this, I got this today. I didn't get it yesterday. I didn't get it at the finance committee meeting, so I could say, hey, could you have this ready for me tomorrow night? Because if I had what I needed to see on here, I could vote absolute yes on this. So this isn't about the value of the project. This does not diminish their hard work. My concern is as a council person here, seeing a $23,000-plus management fee without any resume, any outline of the duties that will be achieved or done for that, if anybody else brought that forward, we'd ask the same question. So I have a choice. I have a choice to table it and say, please get us that information. I'm happy to put it back on next meeting. And then we could pass it 100% when we get that information. Or I could say, take that amount out, and we could revisit it. That's where I'm sitting right now. Because, again, it's not about, anybody can come in here and create the value of everything they say and everything they do. They were great presentation, and I understand that the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission is not stepping up to do this. I endorse it. But our job is budgetary, and there's not enough data on this thing. So I would like to resolve that to successfully feel comfortable passing this. Because if I pass this with anybody's resume, or anybody who's the titled person, or who were going to do this, we would not do this in our own thing without having an RFP or identifying who the person was. I can't hire people to do a study without going through a whole process. So I just want a little bit more documentation so I could say 100% yes. And that's where I am on this. And we can keep the discussion going. Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, I just want to point out, I'm not diminishing these people. And I'll use the word preach again. We get into the good. I'm not someone, anybody that knows me knows I don't put the perfect as an enemy of the good. The good, people will die on the cross for the perfect and not get anything done for years. I will work towards the good and get something done. Keep in mind, one, I think these people are honorable. I know Dr. Holland, I mean, I have no question, and I don't think any questions we have are diminishing anybody's character or reputation. And it's wonderful that they came together. I've known Mr. Zabrowski longer than I'd care to admit. And I mean, you know, I know he's very vocal. At the end of the day, none of this is going to matter if the state doesn't move on it. So again, I mean, they're going to come up with information, and I'm glad. I'm leaning, and of course, I'll probably support this, I just thought that the presentation, when you come to a budgetary group and you make a presentation, a lot of it should get into the details of the money and how you're spending it, as opposed to, we're going to do this great job, it's going to be beneficial, it's going to make up. As someone who had asthma, as someone who carried his son into a hospital who was blue because he couldn't breathe with asthma, I will be the first in line to say, I wish we could do something about the particular matter in our air. And I applaud any efforts to do it. So that, that's on the table now. I don't need to hear how wonderful these people are and the major sacrifices they've made to do this. And if they go on a halo or a sainthood, if you want to give it to them, I'll even build for that. But the thing is, I think the questions are fair. The questions, there's nothing wrong with what I've heard council people say. I just thought that the presentation, looking back on it, could have probably, I did not realize at the time that what the money breakdown was. Granted, it's not a lot of money. I mean, you know, we're buying, we're buying the health networks, a couple mil, over a million and a half dollars worth of vans. So I mean, I agree with you in the sense that I hope that if this goes through, that you get all that information, Tara, and I hope that the state does something with it. That's the problem. I mean, we've got studies with dust on them, maybe in the back of all the studies the county paid money for, that were never implemented. So the state probably has, what, 10 times that amount? But, you know, I'm not disparaging it either, any of these people. They're fine people. They're wonderful people. But as Ms. Hefner said, I mean, ultimately, at the end of the day, if my cousin came in and said, I'm this great guy, give me money, he knows me well enough to know that, first of all, I'd probably hold it against him that he's my cousin. And secondly, I'd probably ask him tougher questions. So I just want to make that clear, because when you made your speech, it was as though these questions are somehow questioning the integrity of these people. I don't question their integrity. I don't question anything about their integrity. I don't question their intent. I'm questioning the use of the money, and I thought it would have been better to have had this discussion when they came and told us how wonderful the project was. That's all. That's all.
Can I just respond?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wait. Ms. Serinski has the floor, then I'll get to you. Thank you.
I guess I know these individuals because they have been part of the environmental community, and they've been environmental leaders. I, we have had them speak at events for the county at Lehigh University. They have organized sustainability and had input on sustainability in Bethlehem City. They have been leaders. Breina Holland is a doctor. Greg Zabrowski was on the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, which is why he has urged this to happen because he saw the need. And I know that Andrea Witren, in her daily life, her resume is sustainability. And Charles Elliott is one, a member of our community who is an environmental lawyer. And I have worked with him on Penny's Pipeline issues when I was organizing before I ever became a Northampton County Commissioner. I think it's important that we look at this a bit more. I don't want this to die today, and if this has to be tabled and they need to come back, I would ask them to do that, and
Ms. Serinski, I have Ms. Witchen on the phone if council has any questions.
No, 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 no.
Well, you have, ma'am.
No, Mr. McClure, you are not recognized at this time.
Well, the charter, the charter.
Ms. Serinski has the floor.
The charter gives me...
We are having a debate. Thank you. Please sit down, and I'll call on you when she's done talking, when I'm ready. Mr. Myers has a question also. Thank you.
The charter gives the county executive the right to participate in county council.
When you are recognized and you are not...
So we have Ms. Witchen on the phone, and I heard...
You are not recognized at this time, sir.
Thank you very much. I have Ms. Witchen on the phone. Do you have questions for her?
I do not at this time.
Does anyone have questions for Ms. Witchen?
Not at this time. You are not running this meeting, Mr. McClure. I know you want to, but you are not running this meeting.
Well, no, I don't want to run this meeting. I just want to be as responsive to council as I can.
Would you like to finish, or I can call on Mr. Myers?
I would like to hear Ms. Witren.
But at this time, he is not recognized, and she is not either. So can I please get back to this? Her telling us who she is does not address my need. Mr. Myers also has a question. If somebody else choose it at this point, but that was just uncalled for. Not you. What just happened there was uncalled for. So I, it was, they interrupted you. If you have any more to say on your matter, please proceed. If not, Mr. Myers gets the floor.
I will give Mr. Myers the floor then.
Mr. Myers?
Madam President, members of council. With all this discussion that we have going on with this particular issue, I don't think at this time, at this point in time, it would be smart for us to move in any other way but to table this until we get more pertinent information. until we get more pertinent information and move on from that point. So I'm making a motion that we table this. If there's a second, bring it back after we get all the pertinent information that we can.
Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
Thank you, there's a motion to table and a second. Call for the vote.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
No.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of six to two.
Thank you. Moving on to the consideration of Livable Landscape Grant Awards Resolution, First Henry's Woods Stream Restoration at Jacobsburg, Ms. Sarinski.
I'll just read the whereas where it talks about what we're actually doing, so that everybody knows. Whereas the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant will be used as follows. Grantee: PA Parks and Forests Foundation. Project Name: Henry's Woods Stream Restoration at Jacobsburg. Ecological, type of project: ecological restoration. Site Location: Henry's Woods in Jacobsburg Environmental Education Center. Municipality: Bushkill Township. County Grant Award: $20,000. Local Match: $603,639. For total project cost: $623,639. Description of project: To restore the stream width, stream bank, and reestablish a vegetated riparian buffer along the Bushkill Creek and Henry's Woods Trail. To armor the two existing degraded public access points and create a third stabilized access point to maintain the balance of ecological health of the Bushkill Creek and safe access for the public. To re-vegetate with native plants, shrubs, and trees to utilize best management practices, BPMs, and prepare a maintenance plan to establish, manage, and maintain BPMs, BMPs, and native riparian buffer established. Grant expiration: December 31, 2024. County funding source: Livable Landscapes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the PA Parks and Forests Foundation grant application for the Henry, Henry's Woods Stream Restoration at Jacobsburg. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator, the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations to this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $20,000 of livable landscape funds as a Northampton County contribution to the Henry's Woods Stream Restoration at Jacobsburg. Should any amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated. We discussed these at the Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee meeting earlier this afternoon.
Thank you, is there any discussion on this matter?
Let me just say, I sat through that, Madam President. I sat through it, and it was excellent. I mean, what they're doing and what they've shown that they're doing, and I know Frank's sitting back there, he was involved, and helping them get these projects, the one that they, one of us approved. And I thought Ms. Spazardi did a great job of showing what's going to happen, absolutely.
Any other discussion? Call for the vote.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I sat through and watched this while I was sitting at home. I have to agree with Mr. Heckman.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot? Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, next, the Bushkill Stream Restoration in the City of Easton, Ms. Sarinski.
Whereas the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant will be used as follows. The grantee: Wildlands Conservancy. The project name: Bushkill Stream Restoration in the City of Easton. Type of project: ecological restoration. Site location: First three dams on the Bushkill Creek within the City of Easton. Municipality: City of Easton. County Grant Award: $100,000. Local Match: $500,000. Total project cost: $600,000. Description of the project: To remove three dams and conduct ecological restoration in the Bushkill Creek watershed, including stream bank stabilization, installation of in-stream habitat structures, riparian buffer plantings, and signage from Lafayette College area to the Simone Silk Mill. Invasive plant removal and native plant, shrub, and tree restoration along the stream and the Carl Sterner Arts Trail to improve water quality and habitat. To complete, an operations and maintenance plan to establish, manage, and maintain the BMPs and native riparian buffer for each landowner. Grant expiration: December 31, 2024. County funding source: Livable Landscapes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. The Northampton County Council hereby approves the Wildlands Conservancy grant application for the Bushkill Stream Restoration in the City of Easton. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $100,000 of livable landscapes funds as a Northampton County contribution to the Bushkill Stream Restoration in the City of Easton. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Thank you, any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thanks, next we have the Tatami Trailhead Crossing, Ms. Sarinski again.
Whereas the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant will be used as follows. Grantee: Borough of Tatami. Project Name: Trailhead Crossing. Type of project: Livable Landscape. Site Location: Main Street and Brayden Park. Municipality: Borough of Tatami. County Grant Award: $75,000. Local Match: $90,000. Total project cost: $165,000. Description of the project: To construct pedestrian crossings at Main Street, Bushkill Street, Euler Road, and Brayden Park to meet PennDOT requirements for safe trail crossings, signalization, markings, and accessibility to provide ADA upgrades to the parking lot, ramps, access, and establish a trail, a trail within Brayden Park to provide safe pedestrian future connections to the Northern Two Rivers Area Trail Gap, nine B routes into Stalker Town, Borough, and Forks Township, also designated as part of the September 11 National Memorial Trail. The grant expiration: December 31, 2024. County funding source: Livable Landscapes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the Borough of Tatami grant application for the Trailhead Crossing. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligations in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $75,000 of livable landscapes funds as a Northampton County contribution to the Trailhead Crossing. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Thank you, any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Next, we have the East Allen Township Comprehensive Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan.
Whereas the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant will be used as follows. The grantee: East Allen Township. Project Name: East Allen Township Comprehensive Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan. Type of project: Livable Landscape. Site Location: East Allen Township. Municipality: East Allen Township. County Grant Award: $30,000. Local Match: $30,000. Total project cost: $60,000. Description of project: To update the township's comprehensive park, recreation, and open space plan adopted in 2011. To develop a plan to guide future development of the township's park systems, open space preservation, modern fees in lieu of dedication and community input with concept designs for park development and rehabilitation. Final product is a complete comprehensive park and recreation plan with concept designs, master plans, and an open space plan to establish a township's voter-approved referendum open space program. Grant expiration: December 31, 2024. County funding source: Livable Landscapes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Northampton County Council. One, the Northampton County Council hereby approves the East, East Allen Township grant application for the East Allen Township Comprehensive Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan. Further, the Northampton County Executive through the Office of the Program Administrator of the Northampton County Livable Landscapes Grant Program or his designee is authorized to take any and all steps necessary to administer and complete Northampton County's obligation in this project. Two, the Northampton County Council further authorizes the Northampton County Executive to appropriate $30,000 of livable landscapes funds as a Northampton County contribution to the East Allen Township Comprehensive Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan. Should an amount be less than the sum approved by the County Council, the remaining balance shall be placed back into the appropriate fund from which it was allocated.
Thank you, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Okay. I just wanted to say that this comprehensive plan is actually really important because East Allen Township just signed on to have an EIT where they actually, it's a tax where they get funds to support their open space program. This comprehensive plan would allow them to navigate how those taxes that they're collecting are navigated. So I think it's very important, thank you.
Anything else? Call for the vote.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, next we have the consideration of Administrative Code Article 13, Contract Resolution, Carroll Engineering Corporation. Mr. Kuzic, will you introduce?
Sure. Whereas, Northampton County Administrative Code Article 13, Procurement and Disposition of County Property, Section 13.15, Contracts and Agreements, C1, requires approval of County Council for any contract exceeding $100,000, which was awarded using the competitive negotiation, negotiation after competitive sealed bidding, and non-competitive negotiation. Source selection methods for contracts with renewal clauses. The entire potential payout, if all renewal clauses are exercised under the terms of the contract, must be considered when determining if council approval is necessary. And whereas, on June 2, 2022, the Northampton County Council received a request from the County Executive for County Council to adopt a resolution approving a one-year contract in the amount of $104,500 with Carroll Engineering Corporation for architectural and engineering services for rehabilitation of Bridge Number 74. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the recommendation of the County Executive as set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Carroll Engineering. This item was discussed yesterday at the Finance Committee, and a recommendation to approve was made.
Thank you, any discussion regarding the matter? Call for the vote.
Mr. Kuzic?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Are there any other new business items to discuss?
May I?
Yes, sir.
Just have an observation, if I'd like to, for the good of the order. I think it's important to note, I've been up around this thing a long time, and people have said too long, a few of them. Get that remedied soon. But I would say that this is a deliberative body. I've been around when you had some real rough people up here who treated people very disrespectfully. And I think there's folks around who have been around when that happened, and some of those individuals were rough. I, since I've been on, I don't think anybody has really been out of line up here. I think there's serious questions about serious issues. And the difference between the executive branch and my experience, for all the executives, I'm not going to pick on this administration, every executive, even when I worked for it, was when the executive branch of our county government speaks, it speaks with one voice. It just, it does, it's the executive's voice, doesn't matter who's up in front of us, it's the executive's voice. We are a group, we speak with nine voices. Maybe that's good, maybe that's bad. And I think that at times, you're not always going to agree with each other. But somebody in their wisdom said, you know what, that's a good idea. Now if we want less controversy, I'd say amend the charter, but don't get rid of the executive, make our numbers three. It's easier to control, somebody can convince two people to do anything about it any time. So I just want to say that I, it's important for anybody. Good people come in front of us all the time, and of course, there's always going to be debates. But everybody, no matter how educated you are, no matter how perfect your cause is, sometimes you get to read the room. And it's not losing, or it's not who's going to win the argument, or who's going to lose. I think most people up here take their job very seriously. And I think they're, everybody up here is good, are good people. I don't think there's any, anybody's trying to disparage anybody. But some people are going to have questions, other people don't. And I really think if this is going to work, we all have to respect each other's right to do that. And that's all I'm going to say, you know, going forward. I don't really care if somebody's a Republican or a Democrat, it's one of the least of my concerns. And I really am not interested, you know, what your, but there's been people who've made great presentations, I just didn't happen to agree with it, but I thought they were smart people, or what they wanted to do made sense, I just didn't agree. And there's people who came up and I thought, oh, that's one of the dumbest things I've ever heard. People have said to me, I think you said one of the dumbest things I've ever heard, more than a few times. So I just wanted to put that out there as somebody who's been on both sides of the aisle and been up here maybe as long as anybody should be. And I don't, I think we're all doing this with good faith. That's all I want to say, the sermon's over, you know.
Thank you.
I'll take my collar off.
I heard a uh-uh.
Somebody's coughing.
Same quality.
That's right.
Any other new business?
Just to follow up a little bit with what Mr. Heckman said. When the federal government passed these massive appropriations down to this level-
Both administrations.
Yeah, that's correct, whether it was the CARES Act or the American Rescue Plan, whether it was the administration or this body was tasked with something that we'd never seen before. We get occasional grants here and there from the federal government. Nothing has, had ever come that way of that size. And I'll tell you what, I'm actually proud of the job that this body has done in scrutinizing a lot of those proposals. Whether it was the small business ones, whether it was the ones we did tonight. I think that council has done itself well in scrutinizing almost every single dollar
that came through those two massive federal programs. So I think, you know, we should somewhat pat ourselves and the administration on the back, because it's something that we've never had to deal with before. And we've done it in back-to-back presidential administrations, huge amounts of money. So I'll leave it at that, and I'll second some of Mr. Heckman's comments.
Wow. What a note of bipartisanship.
Oh, God. So he won't carry out.
Kerry Myers is doing his joke.
Council committee reports? Are there any council committee reports?
I might as well say it. The Personnel Committee met yesterday, the fruits of its labor, you voted on tonight.
Thank you. Ditto on the Finance Committee.
The Energy, Environment, and Land Use Committee met today, and I want to thank everybody for voting for these grant applications.
Are there any liaison reports? I'll start there.
So Farmland Preservation did not meet this month. Open Space Parks Recreation discussed the grants that were here. The Carstgeology Group did not meet this month, but will meet in August, and that meeting will be with state officials. They're trying to broaden the program to allocate more funds and get some more attention to the sinkhole issue that's not only in this county, but regionally and statewide. Our Conservation Districts Board met. We honored Bangor Maroon for their win, not only in the county, but for taking third place in the state. And we also honored Abby Dyson in her first place for wildlife. I would like to honor them here, either in July or August, with proclamations for their achievement, because going to state and placing third is actually a big thing. And for one individual to take first place in, from what I understand, wildlife being one of the most difficult categories, Abby Dyson deserves a lot of kudos.